...Department of Department of the Board meeting for May 2nd, 2017. The beginning of the meeting this evening will start with our village attorney, Brian Maraz, swearing in the newly elected positions.
I, Lorna Gillis.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of village clerk.
Of the office of village clerk. Of the office of village clerk.
For the village of Bartlett.
For the village of Bartlett.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I, Michael Kamer.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of village trustee.
Of the office of village trustee.
For the village of Bartlett.
For the village of Bartlett.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Hi, it's Carbonaro.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of village trustee.
Of the office of village trustee.
For the village of Bartlett.
For the village of Bartlett.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Hi, it's Carbonaro.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of village trustee.
Of the office of village trustee.
Of the office of village trustee. For the village of Bartlett.
For the village of Bartlett.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of village trustee.
Of the office of village trustee.
For the village of Bartlett.
For the village of Bartlett.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
You can wing it.
Hi, Kevin Wallace.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of village president.
Of the office of village president.
Of the village of Bartlett.
Of the village of Bartlett.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, gentlemen. Congratulations. And lady.
Thank you.
With that, I call the meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Kamer.
Here.
Carbonaro.
Here.
Efsent, Hopkins.
Here.
Ranky.
Here.
President Wallace.
Here. We've requested Pastor Rosemary Traynor from Jesus Journey Church to do our invocation this morning. Pastor Traynor.
Father, I lift up the town of Bartlett, our residents, all of our government officials, our president and trustees, and all in places of authority in our town. I pray for your wisdom and guidance in all their decision-making. I lift up our policemen and firemen, and I pray for your protection for them as they are on their jobs each day. Let your wisdom lead and guide them. I pray a blessing over this town and all who live in it. May our town prosper and grow in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Traynor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bye, Jack. Thanks for coming. Next item this evening is our consent agenda. All items listed within asterisks will be considered enacted in one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on these items. At this point, is there anything that anyone would like to add to the consent agenda?
I'd like to add C1 and C2 to the consent agenda.
Anybody have any questions about that?
I'd like to add item A1.
Okay. No objections?
I'd like to add F1 and 2.
Any objections with that? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to amend the consent agenda to include the following: the minutes from the Board and Committee minutes from April 18, 2017; the bills list from May 2, 2017; the consent agenda will also include, will also be adding, item A under Planning and Zoning Committee; Brat's Place Site Plan Amendment and Special Use Permit will be under the consent; we'll be adding, under Finance and Golf Committee, phone system purchase agreement; phone networking equipment purchase from SHI; it will also include the Bartlett Minimum Wage Ordinance, the Bartlett Earned Sick Leave Ordinance; the consent will also include rescind of smoking pit barbecue liquor license; the consent will also include, under Public Works Committee, additional MFT funds for 2017 Bridge Maintenance Project; we'll be adding also, under the consent agenda, Public Works Committee 2017 MFT Bridge Maintenance Project; and finally, the consent agenda will include the, under Public Works, Metro Payment and Parking Contract.
Moved.
Second.
It's moved by trustee Hopkins, second by trustee Kamer. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Ranky.
Yes.
Kamer.
Yes.
Carbonaro.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
The motion carries. Now I'll entertain a motion to approve the amended consent agenda.
So moved.
Move by trustee Kamer, second by trustee Carbonaro.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Kamer.
Yes.
Carbonaro.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Ranky.
Yes.
The motion carries. Next item we have this evening is our Treasurers' Report. There is none. Next, we move to the President's Report. We have a few proclamations this evening. First proclamation is the National Public Works Week proclamation, May 21 through May 27, whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water supply, wastewater treatment, and sanitary sewers, storm sewers, streets and highways, and forestry, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of a community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel of public works departments is supported when citizens understand the importance of public works, and whereas the year 2017 marks the 57th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Therefore, I, Kevin Wallace, Village President, do hereby proclaim May 21 through 27, 2017, as National Public Works Week in the village of Bartlett, dated the 2nd day of May, 2017. So if you see any public works people out on the streets, thank them for doing a great job. Next, this evening, we have our proclamation for National Police Week. Each year, we recognize National Police Week and Police Officer Memorial Day. I'll read the proclamation for that. Proclamation National Police Week, May 15 through 21, 2017, whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which it falls as Police Week, and whereas the members of the Bartlett Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Bartlett, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties and responsibilities of their police department, and that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation, and whereas the Bartlett Police Department has grown to be a modern, scientific, and nationally accredited law enforcement agency which unceasingly provides a vital public service. Now, therefore, I, Kevin Wallace, Village President, call upon all citizens of Bartlett and upon all patriotic civil and educational services to observe the week of May 15 through 21 as Police Week with the appropriate ceremonies in which all of our people may join in commemorating police officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and in doing so have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. I further call upon all citizens of Bartlett to observe Sunday, May 15, as Peace Officers' Memorial Day, to honor those peace officers who through their courageous deeds have lost their lives or have become disabled in the performance of duty, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes, dated the 2nd of May, 2017. And thank you, Chief. Paulo, isn't there a bike ride for Police Memorial Week, too? Jeff knew about it, he just took off. I think there's a, there's a bike.
I know there's a silent ride.
Silent ride.
Yeah. It's coming up, I think, and they're doing that for Police Officer Memorial Day as well.
Finally, Village of Bartlett proclamation recognizing May 1, 31, 2017 as Bike Month. Whereas for more than a century, the bicycles have been an important part of the lives of most Americans, and whereas today millions of Americans engage in bicycle bicycling because it is the viable and environmentally sound form of transportation, an excellent form of fitness, and provides quality family recreation, and whereas the Village of Bartlett with the Active Transportation Alliance are promoting bike-riding events, including Second Annual Kickstand Classic later this fall, and whereas Ride Illinois is educating cyclists and motorists as to the proper and safe operation of bicycles at www.bikesafetyquiz.com, and whereas Ride Illinois, the Village of Bartlett, and Active Transportation Alliance and independent cyclists throughout our village are promoting greater public awareness of bicycle operations and safety education in an effort to reduce accidents, injuries, and fatalities for all. Now, therefore, I, Kevin Wallace, Village President of the Village of Bartlett, Cook, DuPage, and Kane Counties, Illinois, do hereby proudly proclaim the month of May, 2017, as Bike Month in Bartlett, dated the 2nd day of May, 2017. Those are our proclamations for this evening. We will be renewing our liquor license. I'll read them off. We have renewals for Ing, Sun &amp; Sun Inc., DBA Silver Lake Chinese Restaurant, renewal for Cadillac Ranch Texas Barbecue and Boot Bar Inc., DBA Moretti's Lucky Star, Cadillac Ranch Texas Barbecue and Boot Bar Inc., DBA Lucky Star Moretti's Banquets, Artiame Inc., DBA Town Liquor and Food. Also included in the renewals are McCaffey Inc., DBA McMays Tavern and Grill, Bond Drug Company of Illinois, DBA Walgreens, number 15482, Bartlett Hills Golf Club, Farrows Restaurants Inc., DBA El Faro Restaurant Number 2, and Piatanzas Inc. And I will be renewing those licenses if there's no objections to those. Moving along, anybody have any questions for staff? Hearing none, that brings us to the Town Hall portion of the meeting. If anyone in the audience would like to address the board, please step up to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record, and try to keep your comments to three minutes. At this time, is there anybody who'd like to address the board?
I'm quite concerned, as my neighbor, of Route 59, which we all know is a nightmare. We do not see very many police officers making stops with the 45 mile an hour limit that people very seldom do, but more importantly, last Tuesday, I believe, there was a gas main by 59 and Sterns, which tied up that intersection for quite a while. Is that something that would be given out to the public in code red? Yes, no? Anybody know? If not, why not?
Chief, did we do code red on that?
I don't believe we did, mostly because the gas company in the Fire District didn't feel that there was any hazard from an explosion. What we did was, we worked with our GIS specialist, and she created a detour route that we put out on the village website and via social media, so that people knew that the roads were, where the closures were, and how they could get around. Mostly, the roads remained open, for the most part, in both directions. Some of them may have been reduced to a lane, but for the most part, they remained open throughout the incident.
Well, the next part to that question is, I saw what was going on, didn't know what was going on, so I went, took a right down west on Sterns, went to one of my favorite streets, Munger, because not too many people go that way. I made it halfway to Army Trail, and it was bumper to bumper, because apparently no one thought that we'd all be going that way, and there's no stopping on Army Trail there. So it would have been nice to have someone going, "Okay, we gotta clear this up." Next day, I go over to watch my granddaughter, Park District. I have to go down, go into Dominick's, go down and around, because it was closed off Sterns. I come back, thinking I can make a left turn, back into Dominick's, go back around. No. I was forced, as everyone was, to go into the suburb, come out at Dominick's, where 20 other cars were waiting to move. You guys know you got this intersection, you know the traffic volume is way too heavy, so maybe we need to find some funds when we have these kind of accidents to actually get out there and direct traffic, instead of letting people fend for themselves.
Is that it?
That's enough for this week, but I understand 59's gonna be torn up for the next three months.
Yeah.
I don't see anything, I only hear it from people.
Yeah.
I didn't even see anything in the newsletter that said 59's gonna be torn up for three months while they're repairing from North Avenue all the way to 90.
I'm quite certain we'll put stuff on the website when we've got our final plans and what the detours could be.
Okay, well, I'm just asking if there isn't a plan. You mean.
Appreciate it.
Sir.
Could you, could you give the clerk your address, please?
1178 Foxborough Lane.
Thank you.
Been here just over two, not even two years.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Anyone else like to address the board at this time? Hearing none, we'll move on to our standing committee reports this evening. First standing committee report is under Planning and Zoning Committee, Chairman Ranky.
Thank you, Mr. President. The only item we have was addressed on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Chairman Ranky. Next standing committee report this evening is under Building Committee, Chairman Hopkins.
Thank you, President Wallace. We have nothing to report tonight.
Thank you, Chairman Hopkins. Next standing committee report is under Finance and Golf Committee, Chairman Daney. And I requested prior to the meeting that Chairman Hopkins take over Chairman Daney's committee.
The items C1 through 4 were covered under the consent agenda.
Thank you, Chairman Hopkins. Next item under License and Ordinance Committee to sit in for the vacancy under that committee, I asked, requested that Chairman Ranky take over the License and Ordinance Committee for this evening's meeting. Chairman Ranky.
Thank you again, Mr. President. We have four items, I'm sorry, five, four active items on the License and Ordinance Committee. The first one is the ordinance amending Title 1, Chapter 8 of the Bartlett Municipal Code entitled Village Officers and Employees. If you all remember, we talked about this at the last meeting extensively, sort of clarifying who's an officer versus who isn't an officer, and bringing our village code more in line with the Illinois Municipal Code, as sort of a yardstick standard operating procedure. Brian, did I get everything you wanted me to hit, other than we have two options?
Right.
So with regards to the village administrator, we have two options. Option 1 is the term of the village administrator would not exceed that of the village president, which is the maximum allowable under the Illinois Municipal Code. And then option 2 is to limit the term of the village administrator one year, which would be in line with all of the other officers. So it would be my suggestion that we get a motion on the floor, and then, then talk about which option we'd like. So with that, I recommend the passage of Resolution 2017 dash...
55? 55.
55, an ordinance amending Title 1, Chapter 8 of the Bartlett Municipal Code entitled Village Officers and Employees.
Which option?
So moved. So moved, okay. So, what's the committee's thoughts on option 1 or option 2?
Well, I think the village administrator should be appointed with the rest of the officers every year.
Okay, so you're in favor of option 2? Anybody else on option 2?
I'm none. I'm in favor of having it for the term of her contract or...
Not to exceed the village president. Term of the village president.
I think the appointment of the contract is not going to be as long as the village president's term. That's what I prefer.
Okay.
I would agree. I think, I think it makes the most sense to keep it.
It's option 1. Option 1 is not to exceed the term of the village president, and option 2 is one year. I think I'd go with option 1. Okay, so then, Brian, you want me to make another motion to approve option number 1? I move to approve option number 1, to have the village administrator's term not to exceed that of the term of office of the village president.
So essentially, you're amending the first motion?
Amending, yeah, it's an amendment, mending motion.
Okay, vote on the amendment first, and then we'll vote on it with that in there. Okay? So the first motion is to, is just to approve of option 1, to go into that ordinance?
Okay, so it's moved by trustee Ranky, second by trustee Carbonaro. Is there any additional discussion on that?
I see your, I see trustee Hopkins' point. I really do. And the notion of having the village administrator appointed at the same time as everybody else makes sense, because I like consistency, but at the same time in the industry, especially in a municipality the size of Bartlett, whether it's, whoever's filling that seat is going to have an expectation that we have a multi-year contract. So, and part of the whole amending of the village code here is to kind of get away from some of the practices of the past, so I think it makes sense to do option, option number 1.
I agree with option number 1.
So there's a, you need a roll call vote on the motion to amend?
There's no other discussion. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Carbonaro.
Yes.
Hopkins.
No.
Ranky.
Yes.
Kamer.
Yes.
The mayor needs...
President Wallace.
Yes.
So now we need to vote on the ordinance with that.
The motion to include the amendment, option 1, has passed.
So now it's to approve the ordinance. So that was, the original motion was to approve the ordinance. We approved of option 1. So this would be the first motion, which was to approve the ordinance, and by virtue of the first motion that passed, it would be, it would include option 1.
Yeah. So if there aren't any other additional comments or concerns about the overall amendment of Title 1, Chapter 8, then we'll have the clerk call the roll?
We need another motion.
I made the motion.
That was already, that was the first motion.
Right. So the motion's already made.
Okay, it was made by, the motion was made by trustee Ranky, it was seconded by trustee Kamer. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Hopkins?
No.
Ranky?
Yes.
Kamer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
President Wallace?
Yes. That motion carries.
Item number 2 is the appointment by the village president with the advice and consent of the board of the following officers: acting village administrator, village attorney, village treasurer, village budget officer, director of public works, director of building department, electrical inspector, plumbing inspector, chief of police, village engineer, administrative hearing officer, Open Meetings Act officers, Freedom of Information Act officers. And with that, I'll turn that over to President Wallace.
I hereby appoint Paula Schumacher as acting village administrator, Brian Maraz as village attorney, Todd Dowden as village treasurer and village budget officer, Daniel Dinges as public works, director of public works, Ryan Goralski as director of public, of the building department, Bill Detmer as electrical inspector, Dwayne Burns as plumbing inspector, Patrick Olich as chief of police, Robert Allen as village engineer, Tom Bastian as administrative hearing officer, Paula Schumacher as Open Meetings Act officer, and Jim Ploncinski as Freedom of Information Act officer, and in his absence, Paula Schumacher as Freedom of Information Officer.
Mr. President, I move to consent to the appointment of each of the officers made by, as made by the village president.
Second. It's moved by trustee Ranky, second by trustee Carbonaro. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Ranky?
Yes.
Kamer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Item number 3 is designation by the board of trustees of the zoning administrator.
Brian, would you care to fill us in on this one?
The zoning ordinance does not say, there is hereby created the office of zoning administrator. That's the wording in the zoning ordinance, that the board designates a zoning administrator. It has been Jim Ploncinski, and we're looking for, because it's not an appointment by the village president with the advice and consent of the board, but uses that wording, it really has to be handled separately here. So we're looking for a motion by any trustee to appoint Mr. Ploncinski.
I move to appoint Jim Ploncinski as zoning administrator.
Second.
It's moved by trustee Ranky, second by trustee Kamer, to appoint Jim Ploncinski as zoning administrator. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Kamer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Finally, we have professional services agreements by Mr. Maraz and Associates Law Offices of Robert J. Krupp, PC, and Storino Romello and Durkin.
Three motions.
So let's start. I move to approve Resolution 2017-56, a resolution approving of the professional service agreement between the village of Bartlett and Brian E. Maraz and Associates, PC.
Second.
It's moved by trustee Ranky, second by trustee Hopkins. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Carbonaro?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Kamer?
Yes.
That motion carries.
For B is, I move to approve Resolution 2017-57? You know, counting, way above my pay grade. Resolution approving of the professional service agreement between the village of Bartlett and the law offices of Robert J. Krupp, PC.
Second. It's moved by trustee Ranky, second by trustee Carbonaro. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Kamer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Finally, I move to approve Resolution 2017-58, a resolution approving of the professional service agreement between the village of Bartlett and the law firm of Storino Romello and Durkin.
Second.
It's moved by trustee Ranky, second by trustee Kamer. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Ranky?
No.
Kamer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
No.
Hopkins?
Yes.
President Wallace?
So, two to two?
Mm-hmm.
That does not pass, because it's a contract that involves...
It doesn't matter. It wouldn't have passed.
I'm just curious as to vote what's going on.
So, Mr. President, that appears that it's everything we have on license and ordinance this evening.
Thank you.
I would point out that, just for consistency's sake, that up above in the appointments that Tom Bastian of that firm was appointed as the Administrative Hearing Officer.
Yep.
So what does that mean?
Pardon?
What did you mean by that statement?
Well, up above, he was appointed as an officer, because your code creates the Office of Administrative Hearing Officer. But when it came to the contract, and the rates, and things, and the provisions of that contract, it was not approved, so it's just somewhat inconsistent. But it means he's an officer without a contract.
We, technically, there won't be any money to pay him?
No, I mean, if he's performing the services, you've got to pay him for services, but each bill is a separate battle, I guess. So you can, you know, you may decide what you want to do and direct staff as to, if you want to look for a replacement firm, a process, whatever, but in the meantime, he's acting, you need somebody in that office, or somebody acting as a hearing officer, so it, in that regard, it makes some sense.
Yep.
It isn't, most of the contracts are a year, and so he does not have a year contract.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Chairman Ranky, for stepping in on that committee. Next item on our agenda this evening is under Police and Health Committee, Chairman Carbonaro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to report this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Carbonaro. Finally, under our committees this evening is Public Works Committee, Chairman Cammer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Everything under Public Works was covered under the consent agenda.
Thank you, Chairman Cammer. Finally, we're down to new business. Does anybody have a new business for the good of the order?
Should we start looking for another hearing officer, since we don't have one under contract?
Yeah, I think it's probably something we should direct staff to discuss with any trustees that are having issues with who we have now, and figure that out, and bring another contract back.
I would imagine there'd be some discussion about a process, some kind of RFQ or RFP process. There are firms that specialize, you're not supposed to say that, lawyers, but there are firms that they do a lot of that type of work, that would be qualified, so we'd have to do a little looking into that.
What kind of timeframe?
With the process.
What kind of timeframe would we be looking at?
I would envision it probably a month and a half or so, I would assume. It depends how broad the, you expand that process and what you're looking at, getting some recommendations and things, getting contract back. It may not take that long, I just don't know how wide of that you want to cast in terms of potential candidates, and getting input from you folks, if you have any reconceived notions or...
We'll work on that, though. I'm sure we can work on discussing that with trustees that have had an issue, maybe we can resolve that issue and bring it back to the Board as is. If not, then we'll look at replacement contracts. Any other thing? Any questions? We'll be moving directly into the committee of the whole meeting after this meeting. Any questions for staff? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Trustee Cammer, seconded by Trustee Carbonaro. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
We are adjourned.